I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you'd stand and join me for the pledge.
Sorry.
Oh, roll call. I'm so sorry. Roll call.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ryan Wesco.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
All right. Pledge allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to read our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
For those watching this meeting via video recording, I just wanted to let them know that we're having technical difficulties, so the presentation materials will not be visible on the video recording, but you can access them through Board Docs and review them as you watch the video. So I just wanted to let you know that, so you could look for those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are now on to recognitions. I see we have a lot of faces.
All right. It's great to see the turnout this evening. We have, you know, when we do recognitions in the summertime, I know our students are really busy and many of them have graduated already that we're recognizing, so I'm glad to have the ones who could be here with us this evening. We've got two different student groups we want to recognize this evening, the first of which is our state championship squad from a Reader's Theater. And I was talking to Mr. Schnacki beforehand, and it's the eighth time our Raypek Theater Department has won the state title in Reader's Theater. And we're glad to have several of those students here with us this evening. So as I call your name, please come forward. Macy Blair. Isabel Burton. Tevin Chavez. Stay up here if you wouldn't mind. We're going to take a photo. Trevor Deepenbrock. Peter Diring. Courtney Farr. Ian Haston. Parker Hopman. India Cottrell. Noah Lamson. Riley Lynn. Austin Mulder. Cameron Perry. Dalton Russell. Okay. Kelly Shanahan. Erica Thiling. Allison Tragaser. Song Walts. And Valiante Walts. He is here. Let's congratulate them for their final accomplishment. Obviously, a lot of time goes into all of our theater productions and contests and competitions, and so it's nice to see them rewarded with a state title, and congratulations. And we continue to expect great things from you guys moving forward. Congratulations. Thanks for being here. All right. Next up, we have another group of distinguished students, and these are our students who completed all of the requirements to earn their international baccalaureate diploma. And obviously, this effort began many, many years ago, and there were some of our board members who went on a very cold trip to study this program in someplace like Minnesota or something in the middle of the winter and worked. A lot of our high school staff and administration have put a lot of time into building the program and getting it off the ground, and this is the first group of students who have completed all those requirements. So as I call your name, please come forward. Malone Black. Grant Bosley. Lily Carroll. Jordan Dos. Dalton Gilmore. Samantha Higam. Austin Mulder. Zachary Newman. Benjamin Osborne. Jacob Schreiner. Jesse Turos. Audrey Waters. And Connor Woodward. All right, let's give them a round of applause. In addition to all their academic pursuits and all the extra demands that go with these difficult courses they've taken, these students are involved in a lot of other activities around the school. So congratulations to them on all their success. You can go ahead. Thank you to Mr. Meek for all your efforts in guiding the program, and again, all those faculty members that have been part of helping these students along the way, not only their junior and senior year when they take these courses, but all the way from kindergarten forward to help them prepare for that. So congratulations. And we have one other recognition we want to do this evening, and we each year recognize our Raypek Teacher of the Year, and this year that person was Dan Garrison, who's a history teacher at our middle school. He's moving from East Middle School to South Middle School, but recently he was named as one of the 32 regional winners for the state of Missouri. So he's in the final 32, and let's congratulate him for that. So Dan had to fill out an application and put a lot of extra time into sending that information off. And at this point, obviously, across the state, when you think of all the thousands and thousands of teachers, just to be in that final 32 is truly an honor. So congratulations and thank you for all you do. With that, all of our recognition folks are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. So now if you'd like to step out, you're welcome to. Thank you for coming.
Ian. Come sit here.
Okay, moving on to the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. Is there any public comments this evening?
Not tonight.
Informational items, a construction update from Insight Design Studio.
Patrick with us again this evening.
Yep. And we're getting pretty close to the end here, so there'll be a lot of getting close to finished photography here, so.
Patrick, get up close to the mic, please.
Yep. So first off, you know, we've been showing this cover image the entire time, and I will go, if you start to go to the next slide, there is real life now, so you can see it coming together. The big RP signage piece was put on a couple of weeks ago, so very exciting that we've gotten to this point. So I wanted to lead with kind of a new cover tonight of the dream is close to a reality at this point. So as we keep going, so we've been, I've kind of morphed this around a little bit as we started last time, looking at more the kind of the past, present, and future of where we've been. And, you know, we've been giving these updates a lot of times every other month, and now I did it in June, and I'll back here as more things have been happening, as we've been nearing the end. A lot of the final finishes are going in, the VCT, which is the flooring that goes in the hallways for the most part, the carpet, ceiling tiles, they're putting on the final coats of paint, and then all the rubber base, which is like what this gray base is coming around the wall. That's all, the final touches going in. As you can see, that big RP on the exterior, a lot of the signage pieces are going in. I just walked around the school before I came here, too. Some of the smaller signage pieces that call out the theater or the gymnasium, those are all up as well. There's a few wall graphics. There's one by the student entry on the south that'll have the panther. That's going to go up hopefully later this week. That's the goal, if not next week. And they've begun on the final clean. So, and this is more the renovation areas. The final punch is scheduled for August 1st, so next Tuesday, and coincidentally, that is when substantial completion was set way back when, the beginning of the project. So Crossland and everybody were right on schedule, and I think there, it'll be a good punch. There won't be too many items, and they're definitely ready for it. So we're in good shape. I'll start, the next slides, I'll start to flip through some of the renovation photos. See, there's the new signage piece, the Raymore Precursor High School letters. They're just a touch bigger and a little darker to pop more off of the new colored EFS. This is the new signage piece at the south entry. In the top left corner, I tried to get a zoomed-in picture of it a little bit, but just to kind of call out the panther and that entry, as that'll be one of the main entries if you've got a basketball tournament or whatnot going on, the athletic side as well. But I know that's where a lot of the students enter as well, so getting an additional signage piece on that entry was a nice touch.
Is there any added lighting to that by chance?
Not yet. We did put conduit underneath the drive, new drive. That's not something that was part of this project. So if we have funds available when this is all done, we might be able to get that done before the winter season when that becomes the issue.
That would be great. Thank you.
The big RP at the front, on the north side, at the new addition, does light up.
Okay.
So then, this is your new cafeteria. Notice all the blue's gone. So there's new column wraps, and right now, the existing columns that are in there, that's just plywood wrapped around it. There's a really nice graphic that's going to go in that'll say Raypek and Panthers and have a panther wrapping around it. So that should hopefully be going in maybe next week. We've approved all those final samples. It's really neat looking. And then the VCT pattern, you can see that will be going throughout the hallways, and it all ties together. This is the new serving area. A lot of times, photos don't do it justice, too, without walking through the space to feel how big the spaces are. You can only do so much with the camera. But this is actually standing at what would be the exit. So you'll, the students have two ways of enter. They would enter on either side. The lines will be similar, and then they can circle back through and back out the middle. And then you can see this, these are two of the hallways, of existing hallways. The one on the left, I believe, is actually standing just inside the new addition, looking all the way back. The light at the end of that tunnel is actually the cafeteria. And then on the right, you're in the patio commings, looking down your old 600 wing. And so you can see the new tile patterns and the new locker, well, the new painted lockers on the left, those were all blue at one point. So it's all starting to come together. And then this is your, what you see as you walk right in into the administration office from the main entry. So there's a nice desk with the lighting on it, and there's two of these, and that's where the attendance office is. On the new construction, a lot of the same things are going on. All these finishes, the trades are all working in both spaces now. At this point, everything's caught up at the same point. So it's VCT, carpet, paint, rubber base, all the final finishes are going in. We did actually do kind of a two-phase punch on this. July 11th, we went and did a punch list on all the classrooms, and I think I described what a punch list was last time, but it's where we go, kind of, this wall needs to be retouched up, painted, that ceiling tile has a crack in it or something. So we did that on July 11th for all the classrooms to try to get things done a little quicker to where it can help maybe the school district move in a little bit, some of the furniture ahead of time, and just kind of two-part, it helps Crossland get ahead of the curve as well. But this is the media center. You can start to see the carpet. Well, it's a little tough in this photo, but the carpet is coming across from, it's all, the stacks all have carpet underneath it now, and the final wood and the outlets on the learnings there are in, so there's USB plugs, regular outlets, the daily grind signage is in. I think it really looks nice in there. This is standing more by the stacks, looking back. That's the circulation desk on your right, and then you can see the elevator tower in the back right that the stair wraps around. So this is actually, the picture on the right is the same one I showed last month, and then the one on the left is now just to show what the progress has been over the last month as the VCT is finishing up. The painting and the glass on the left that reads Media Center, it's just that last level of finish and that detail as it's coming together. So this one's a little chopped up. This is actually three put together. You can kind of see the breaks, but I wanted to try to give you a panorama essentially of what the gymnasium looks like. And right now, as I just walked over there before here, you have to walk on it with your socks right now to make sure all of the painting and everything cures properly, but you can get a good look of what the gymnasium looks like. It's really nice in there. This is the new band room. And then the next photo, actually, that's the storage room for the band instruments, so there's plenty of room in there for students as they're getting instruments in and out. And we've, one of the benefits from rearranging, we were able to reuse a lot of the existing cabinetry, but a lot of the similar instruments were paired next to each other, so we've spread those out. As you can see, there's more of a random pattern to them, so you don't have a bunch of people trying to cram it in one spot, getting different types of instruments. But the band room's got a really nice tall ceiling to help with acoustics. This is, the glass on the left is looking down below into the media center. So this is the freshman lounge, maybe, or lounge area up at the top of the stairs on the second level of the new addition. And then these are the hallways of the second floor up top. So one of the things we talked about, it's the same carpet that's going in a lot of these classrooms. It's kind of the new style. Any of the newer classrooms, even in the renovations, have this carpet going in as well, and it's a very durable carpet.
We did carpet in the second-story hallway in all those classrooms, so it helps with sound deadening for the first story. That was the intent of having carpet up there instead of tile.
And then for the summer building projects, again, we're at the tail end of that, so everything, it's final finishes, final touches of painting, most of the carpet and everything is down there, maybe just a touch ahead. The substantial completion was a little earlier on that, so we actually on Tuesday punched those areas. And just like with the high school project, we will punch them, and then we come back and do a punch review to make sure everything was picked up. And so here in another week or two, we'll probably have the punch review on this project. The Scholl element, the Scholl Early Learning Center, the windows had just gotten in, and we'll see photos of those, but, and there's the new signage for Scholl Early Learning Center. And so we'll go back once those windows are completely finished and review everything. This is some of the new toilet fixtures, a lot of them with, especially at Scholl, when it was going from the age level it is to the early childhood center, we needed to lower some of those fixtures. And so you can see, they still need to paint some of the blockwork that had been done. And then on the left is a new wash fountain that was, they had individual sinks there, and now it's a new wash fountain for, as more of the district standard that's been going into some of the other schools, and also what we put in at the high school as well. It's a little bit of a fuzzy picture, but you can see, the reason I wanted to show this photo is these are one of the new windows at Scholl, and you see the extra lining or sash on the left window. That is actually an operable window that acts as a second egress exit out of the room, which is one of the requirements for an early childhood learning center. This is Bridle Ridge, and the reason I like this photo is on the left is actually was an existing opening door classroom that was not touched, and on the right is one of the new ones. So you can see they are very seamless. They look very similar to each other, which is obviously the intent when we're doing some of these renovation projects. We want it to seem like it was always that way to begin with. So you can see all in that one space, and the carpet, and the rubber base, and the paint, it's all final there. So there's just some cleaning to do. And then at Eagle Glen, again, the one on the right is, was an existing doors to existing classrooms, and the one on the left is new. So as we were taking these pods and making them from five to four classrooms and expanding them, we had to create these new doorways, but I think they fit in very seamlessly. And that's all I've got. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you and everybody that's been involved in this and adhering to timelines, because, you know, delays when you're trying to start school are not, you know, a welcome thing. So thank you for all that you guys have done, and like I said, for being attentive to those.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's been a team effort from us, Crossland, the school district, everybody involved, and it's been a great team, and I think that's helped contribute to us being able to be right on time, so.
I know we've said this before, but I've just been impressed with how professional the whole process has been, both with Insight Design as well as Crossland. You've really put thought and effort into this, saved us some money, kept the exchange orders down. I very much appreciate that. So yes, I would love to give you a reference anytime you need it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
It's very exciting.
It's been exciting and fun for us.
I drive, you know, up and down School Road quite a bit, and when the RP letters went up, it was really exciting.
Yeah. I think it looks great, so we're very excited about it and pleased, too, so.
We're excited to showcase it in any ways we can. So any other comments?
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Health Services Program Review. I want to call you Nursey, but Jennifer Johnson.
Yeah, I'm Jennifer Johnson, the nursing supervisor for the school dis, Raypek School District. I think this was my seventh year finishing as, I just finished my seventh year as supervisor. Look at me go. Still standing. No pink slips yet, but, you know, that time can come. Hopefully not, hopefully not, but, well, no, not you, not you. But I just finished my 12th year as a school nurse, which I do love. I've got a great staff, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it. I've got three spots that are open for the next year, so opportunity for new people. And Mary Restemeyer has been one of our longtime nurses, and she's retired, so I was looking, and Jamie Bogner and I are like the old ladies now in the group, and, you know, I didn't ever imagine that to be the case. So I'm thankful, but also like, wow, you know, age, reality check. Birthday's in a couple of weeks, so, you know, having a hard time with that. Anyway, so Health Services, we just babble, I just babble. Kind of doing some of the same things. We've, our purpose to promote wellness in our schools and to try to respond to things, a lot of emotional needs, I feel like, more than physical, it seems these days. I spent quite a bit of time at the middle school, a lot of emotional things happening at the middle school. As you can probably imagine, some of you have kiddos I've seen through there, and so we're trying to just, you know, keep taking care of those babies. They're still my babies, even when they're, you know, taller than I am. So some of the highlights, we, Darlene was so important, I put her on here twice, so sorry about that. Was trying to go back and do alphabetical order, and, but I have a great staff, but it shows the opening at Scholl, opening at Eagle Glen, where Nurse Mary left us, and then the East Middle School spot, but I'm looking forward to, I had three, a third applicant this morning, so that's encouraging. Three applicants for three spots, that's what you need, right? So here's some of the functions that we do, continuing the same liaison for the parents and community health agencies, the immunizations. So acting on that, the Cass County Health Department does, is going to come and meet with us and work with us on August 2nd for registration to get some of those kiddos. And last year, they did over 220 kiddos. They immunized them for the upper levels, but this year I think they're going to help with some kindergarten shots as well, so that's good. And then they also came to the middle school and the high school and did clinics there. So they are really great to work with and to help us get those kiddos immunized, so parents are less inconvenienced and don't have to take time off and all that. If they're already at registration, get your shot, get going. Easy peasy. So some of our health room averages, I kind of highlighted, we did go up a little bit in our elementary school levels. We were up from like last year, I think, or the last time I presented, it was like 38 kiddos, and we're up to 47. Went up in the middle school. Middle school still has the record. The last time they hit, the record was 140 kids in one day. This year, we hit 160.
Wow.
160 kiddos through that health room in one day, that poor little nurse.
Was it a Monday?
I think it was a Thursday. So they'd had enough for the week, I guess, or something. Too much learning. I'm not sure what happened, but just a lot of kiddos, you know. Both nurses that were hired through there were really nice. It wasn't a day that I was there. I don't think my numbers ever got that high. I think they were like, no way, Jose, I'm not coming in there. It's you, so. But the kiddos, the students, the chronic illnesses that we see and kind of highlight, diabetic students, we had two brand-new kiddos diagnosed this year, so I think the parents felt really comfortable in sending their student to school because the nurses are very knowledgeable about diabetes, and even to the point, more than the parents are, because they're learning this new process, and what do we do? And luckily, the nurses had had some experience with that, so they were able to just pick right up and take care of their kiddo while they're at school. So the food allergies and the EpiPens highlighted that. Asthma students, the students with asthma seemed to be down from the last time, but it might not be reported every time. You know, sometimes when they start in elementary school, they don't always put it on their form because they think you already know it, because they put it on there in kindergarten. So why do you have to know in fourth grade? So that number went down a little bit, but we're still, you know, providing the services for that.
Do you have to manage mental health medications as well? What per, how, is that a significant number?
Um, it's, I wouldn't say it was. A lot of the medications that we give are for attention deficit. That seems to be a majority of the medications, but there are some that are kind of heavy duty, and they are taken at school so that the parent knows that they're receiving them. Some of the kiddos are not always having parents or grownups get them ready for school, so they don't take it, and they don't have successful days. So I feel like we did have an increase in the number of kiddos that take medicine on the daily at school. I think it was 82, and I think it was 66 the last time, two years ago. And I know for a fact, at the middle school, I mean, I think I had 16 kids, or 16 medications that were given, sometimes same kiddo twice a day or multiple medications in the morning. But I am seeing a lot more of that and a lot of changes of medication, trying to figure out those moods and some of that stuff. They, definitely the psychological piece of their health overall is playing a factor in what we do. You know, sometimes, I mean, we are the counselors, too. We're the grownups, the moms, that, you know, so it's something I know the upper levels for sure have noticed, but even some of the traumas and the ACEs that the kiddos have been through, even in smaller, in younger ages, it's hard.
So we're seeing an upward trend, for sure.
Yes, yes.
Well, and that kind of goes along with the question I was going to ask. You know, like of the 48, then at the intermediate, do you distinguish out between those, what is medical versus what is mental?
Not according to what, I mean, not according to our charting, but I would say at least a third of those kiddos either need a mental health break, they just need to get out of the classroom for a moment, they need to settle down, they need to, just a change of scenery. I think that was why middle school numbers are so high with the longer classes. I think that they just get a little bit edgy and just need to move.
Well, and I think sometimes the general public just doesn't realize a lot of the needs that our students come to school with.
Right.
You know, statewide, there's 10 students in our state right now that are DNRs at their school.
Wow.
You know, that's big deals that our nurses have to deal with every day.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it does, I mean, it does have, I was thinking of the couple of kiddos, and then we've, you know, just had a new one that enrolled at the Early Learning Center, and I talked to her mother and, you know, brain injuries and things like that, and just the sickness that parents have to go, you know, you're very fortunate if you have happy, healthy kiddos, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're totally fine. I'm, again, just. So some of the professional development, we're continuing. The trauma-sensitive training was something new that we've added, continuing with the concussion management, continuing with the health department, just working with them on immunizations. I did distribute the Health Services Manual, so I'm just continuing to make sure that it's up to date and adding new things as they pop up. The Medication Administration, substitute nurses. We've had a good, we have a shallow pool of substitutes, but we did use the agency nursing, favorite healthcare staffing quite a bit. That did save the day a lot of times throughout the school year, and I was thankful that we had them, but they don't have the same access to computers and information and stuff, so it does make it a bit challenging. Some of the numbers may be off just a little bit because they don't put it into the computer, so it's handwritten and kept that way as opposed to documenting in the computer system because we don't want them to have that private information, so. And then the goals, I think we did pretty well with our goals. The, it seems the district's pretty happy with how we're handling ourselves. We have all green arrows up, so that makes me happy. Good sign. So I think we're doing good work, and I think we've got good people, and very happy that my and very happy that my team is staying the way they are and continue just to work with the same types of things to improve efforts. There's always new things coming out, and medical medications and medical care are changing all the time, so trying to stay up on those things. We just want to keep improving and, and get some good people to stay around so they can be the old ladies up here, and then just continue to improve the, the manual to make sure that the information's there that's necessary.
Do we, because legislators have tried to mandate everything, do we have specific autism training that our nurses have to go through?
Not specific, no. We try to touch on things that has come up. I mean, some, it's, it's been kind of a tricky situation with special education, because they, parents don't always indicate that the child's autistic, and so we don't always have that.
Okay.
I think sometimes the nonverbal students will come in with a paraprofessional so that they are able to help talk through. But there have been times where even myself, I've tried to talk to a kiddo that I didn't know had some, was on the spectrum, and I...
So, do we, not, I don't know if coordinate's the right word. Are IEP students with our nurses? So, that you all are on the same page?
Not as consistently as we would like, honestly. I mean, for the most part, we're, we, I think the nurses are very good at knowing their, like, I could tell you 5, 450 of the 500 kids at Eagle Glen when I worked there. I can't do that in the high school, but I could do that in the smaller numbers. And so, you do get to know your kiddos. And I feel like the nurses that have stayed, you know, we are getting some years built up. So, I feel like they do know their kiddos, and they do know who's coming through there. But the new nurses may not have that same relationship initially, because it takes a little bit for that. So, we're trying to coordinate, but it's that, do you need to know that only if they come into the health room? Well, I feel like we do. They don't always feel like it's necessary. So, it's been a little bit tricky, but we've worked on an individual basis with special ed and with, to try to help even that out and make sure that we're in the know when we need to be.
Any other questions?
I just have a, a comment. I was at the middle school on Immunization Day, and I was very impressed with how the chaos was handled. All those kids, I don't know how you did it, but it was crazy, and you did it well.
Thank you, thank you. I, I mean, I just was, I mean, that's, and that's not, I mean, there was a few more than usual, but there's been times where you've had that many in here. Okay, stop. Who's just here? Who needs this? Who needs that? You know, and I, I have a big enough voice that they tend to hear me. So, but, and Dina was amazing. She just was kicking them out, and so it was.
She's great to get shot.
She doesn't hurt.
You don't even feel it.
Right, she's amazing. Yeah.
She is.
Yeah.
How involved are you, like, with the sports teams? Like, you've had concussions on there. I mean, do you do like a baseline assessment?
We do. We've been, Trevor Volkland has come and trained the nurses a couple of, a few different times to kind of just go over things again and to just, I think the more you hear it, the more comfortable you are with how things go. We have the same sheet in our offices that he has the students fill out based on symptoms and how they're feeling and those types of things. We have a few of the nurses that have actually gone to practices and kind of watched, not the whole thing, but just kind of initially to see some of those things so that we are more in the know about concussion management. We've done a couple of the brain injury panels that have, they present in Gladstone. I've had a few of the nurses go to that. I actually got to present on it a year ago in February to be part of that, one of the panels there, just because it is so up and coming. So, I think that the high school, the upper level nurses are more involved and more on the same page with Trevor and Dan to try to figure out if this kiddo really, and referring them to be seen if, if they think there's concussion symptoms that are present.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we have EpiPens in all of our buildings so that if there's an emergency?
Every, every health room. Not in the academy, but there is one at Shoal. That's a good point, because maybe we should, but, you know, they would pull the nurse over so she would run and grab the, the kit. So, yes, there are stock EpiPens, an adult and child, in every building.
So, are we going to share nurses then with the Early Learning Center and the Academy this year?
That was the plan.
Was the plan?
It is the plan. That, that was the plan as I know it. Yes, that is the plan. Yes, ma'am.
So, I know our, our district has done a phenomenal job with meeting, trying to meet the needs of our students with a limited budget and coming up with very creative solutions. I also trust our administration to keep us informed on significant needs of our staff. But since you are here, the miracle question, or the dream question, if you could have anything, what do you think your department needs?
Can I say it? More money to increase salaries for the wonderful people that I have right now.
And just so we can have it on record, why is that?
We are very low. At least $10,000 less salary-based than our neighbors. Even Raytown School District, even their LPNs, which there's a differential, you know, between degrees and whatnot, their LPN is higher by $2 than our RN start pay is. I had one of the candidates that has applied to us, and she is very interested in Ray Peck, and she would really like to be at Ray Peck. She has a family member that works in the district and speaks very highly, but she said, "I can go across the highway and make $10,000 more a year." And...
So, would you say that affects in some ways the quality of people we can hire in? Or that it plays a part?
It does play a part. I believe that two of the nurses, I had two nurses that came to, I hired two and lost two nurses at the middle school, and both of them was because of money. They had different situations that presented themselves financially. One husband quit his job, and one got engaged. So, if she would have added her fiance to her insurance money, she would have not had anything to live on. So, she said, "I like this job, but I can't, I can't support myself. I have a single mother who really," I mean, she said, "I'm actively looking. I like this place. I like you. I don't want to leave, but I can't support myself on what I've got." So, you know, you can't begrudge her. I, I love her enough to say, "Okay, you got to do what you got to do," but, you know, it breaks my heart to, and I thought I was going to lose her, but I think she's...
Do we have a minimum? Do they have to be LPN?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our preference, because they're so autonomous, they need to be able to assess a student if, if they're declining, or, you know.
And do we have the proper RNs at the buildings that are in high need for an RN?
I, yes.
The student need there?
It's, it's maybe not necessarily RN, but it's accessible. We, we have, we're about half and half. So, at my high school level, both of those ladies are LPNs, but one has a lot of experience and has been in the school district just a year less than me. So, I have a lot of faith in her abilities to assess and to, and she will call and say, "I need RN knowledge. I have a question." And so, I think that we have enough of the RN's place that they can access their assessment skills if necessary.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You do a very good job, and we very much appreciate all you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, moving on to board policy.
We have one board policy for informational first reading this month, and this is BBFA, which is the Financial Disclosure and Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy. The Missouri Ethics Commission is, has a standard that if we adopt this or re-adopt this every other year, it meets the requirements for you to only have to fill out the simple financial disclosure report. So, it's a, it makes it an easier process for you as the elected officials. And it's good policy, and we've re-approved it on a regular basis. So, this is just a first reading.
All right. Any questions? Moving on to action items, construction change orders.
I have. The board packet contains the details for 17 change orders through five different of our contractors, but I'll briefly summarize them. But I'm happy to obviously answer any specific questions as we go through there, so you can stop me at any time. As I said, we have 17 change orders there. I'll start with Phillips. Phillips is the contractor we're using for all of our parking, asphalt, and concrete work. I have six change orders for them. Change order one is additional concrete and asphalt to SMS. It's just when they're doing all the quantities and compiling all that, sometimes it doesn't come out exactly the way we thought it would. So, just looking at the differences in prices there, that's 75, 27. There was also some additional milling at SMS, our South Middle School, and then some additional quantity on the Connector Road, the old bus loop road. They had to go a little deeper and, and wider than they had originally planned, so there's an additional cost of $6,697 there. So, as you'll see here, concrete and parking lots are expensive. We did a full-depth repair of the South Connector Road in front of the, kind of what's called the pound parking lot there. There was some high-need areas, especially if we're going to be using that at all during school road construction. We were afraid it was not, it was just going to crumble away. So, we did do a full-depth repair. That was an additional scope as a change order. One of the, the change order four with them is a pretty large one, it's $17,746. As they were preparing to rebuild the south parking lot at the high school, realizing just the rutting that was there was more substantial than we previously thought, and Phillips, and we actually, Insight brought in a gentleman with his doctorate in concrete. Didn't know you could do that, but he's, he knows his stuff. So, he came, and we visited with him, and he agreed with the, with Phillips that this was something we really needed to do. It was going to add extensive life to the parking lot, so we did move forward with that. Right out here, the apron coming off of 211th into ASC, the entrance between Shoal and, and ASC, that apron is, is just crumbling. So, we are looking at doing a full-depth repair to include, to get that fixed. So, that's change order five, that's $25,063.
And that'll become a major thoroughfare during the year of construction here on School Road, so.
Yeah. No matter where they're at in the school road process, we will have over 1,000 vehicles coming through there. So, that's, that's an area we want to make sure that we have up to par. And then finally, change order six is for $5,235 for anybody that's came in the sidewalk there in the main commons at the high school. We replaced the first 60 feet from the building out. I have a note there, Crossland's actually going to credit us $2,670. They're going to split it with us, as some of that deterioration was due to the construction traffic, you know, with their, with their different machinery on that sidewalk. So, just to summarize, we do have substantial change orders in pavement, so I wanted to kind of summarize our whole pavement project. With all of these change orders, that is about a 13% increase that would, that is able to be absorbed into our capital projects. With the contingency budget that we included when we asked for the capital projects budget to be approved, that will be covered within that. So, I have one change order from Willcott. They're in charge of all of our elementary renovations. I had a previous change orders. You guys liked the first three. They added up to a credit of $10,526. We do have to ask for a change order of $955 for some additional ADA grab bars. That building being 50 years old, the ADA bars, we're reusing the ones that were there. They're still in good shape, but there's some additional requirements for us to stay in code. Okay, jumping back to Phase One, which was at the beginning of the high school project, but then they come back to finish their work afterwards. I have three change orders for J. Lilig. There's some additional curbing on the north side to cover some footings that were, were a little bit low. Crossland's also, which I'll talk about Crossland's change orders in a minute, you'll see a credit from Crossland that actually is tied to this change order. J. Lilig charges us the full amount to do that work, but some of that was on a Crossland. They didn't get their elevations just right, so they're going to credit us for that component. So, 1,300 of that will be coming back. Change order eight, sometime between last summer and this summer, things got more expensive. And within our contract with Lilig, there's an asphalt index pricing alignment so that, so that they don't have to just eat the increased cost of their materials. So, that's included in change order eight. And change order nine was a new, right there where the RP sign is, one of our roof drains comes down and just dumps into a small area. Well, the amount of, the quantity of rain and water runoff there, the storm drain would, needs to be tied in underground, otherwise it's going to flood out, and we'll never get any landscaping or anything to go there. So, there's...
That was an existing roof drain from the existing building, one was there previously.
And all the way down that side, that's like the only one that isn't tied into the new construction. So, it got, it's kind of stuck out there. And there is a storm drain directly under it, so we can do it at a relatively nice, decent price. Finally, I have six change orders for Crossland Construction. Change order 38 through 43, so I'll go through those. There's a $1,250 charge, concession stand epoxy floor demo. We included in the plans and the specifications for them to rip out all the flooring in the kitchen, the serving area, all of that. Well, that little corner concession stand had an epoxy flooring that wasn't taken into consideration, so that was an additional charge. That's not easy to get up. On change order 39, we have a couple areas where that nice big wrap's going to be that ties the patio commons into the, into the extension of the patio commons in front of the dome. Above that, you're going to be able to see that, and there wasn't previous plans on how to make that look pretty. So, came up with a solution, and so that's going great, and that's included in there. And then there was a little bit of missed, it's amazing how much Insight has to think about in advance. The bottom of the stairs in the northeast corner that going up to your freshman wing wasn't called out to be painted underneath. So, that's included in there also. We, it is an area you can see, so we do want to make sure that looks nice and it's painted correctly. Change order 40 has several of our plumbing issues. The ADA shower, just when we switched to a different style to make sure we made ADA, well, as they moved it up, the handle still has to stay. So, as you move the shower up, the handle has to stay there, so there's a change there. The dishwasher duct, the type of dishwasher that we included had to have a ceiling penetration to have it ducted out. And then there were some sprinkler issues in the kitchen in the area J. over there where, to get our ceilings where we wanted them, we had to adjust some sprinkler heights. So, that's all included in the plumbing. Change order 41 is a $1,300 credit, so we love those. And that's tied back to the Lilig change order earlier. Change order 42 is all of our electric issues for this month. It's $3,915. And there's a goggle cabinet that we actually gets plugged in, because then the UV rays actually clean the goggles while they're not, while they're in storage. And originally, we didn't necessarily plan on having those, electricity ran to those. There's an exhaust fan we needed some, all, these are mostly in the science rooms. Exhaust fan and a fuma hood that also needed some electrical, additional electric. And finally, change order 43 for $12,163. That's a large one with Crossland. The door magnets, the hold open, how they communicate. When the fire alarm goes off, they all shut automatically. There was also an additional hallway frame that was called out to leave existing that now we replaced, and it wasn't able to keep the old one. And then there, there's a keying credit of $1,000 included there as well. That's, as we went back and forth on how to make all of the structural chart work for our keys, Scott Dobson actually took that on, away from Crossland, a big piece of that, bought some software, and him and his guys did that themselves, and so that got us $1,000 credit there. Finally, Progressive, who is our contractor for the AV side for the high school project, has one change order where they're going to provide and install 67 power strips. That is to make sure that we have plenty of places for all of Ryan Gooding's equipment in those classrooms. So, the high school project summarized for you. I knew that it's information you obviously care very much for. The July change orders you see on the, on the first column there, or the second column, then the total change orders to date are listed there, along with the base bid amount, which means, just some simple math, we are just, we are 0.9% increase on change orders, which is a credit to a lot of people with our contractors and our designers and working together as a team to come up with solutions that save our district money.
I couldn't get my mic turned on fast enough. You said, "Which is amazing."
So, I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Is Ryan Gooding going to pay for those?
Yeah, he takes checks.
He said he would be glad to write a check. So, we'll take that out of Technology Department, I think.
Thank you for all your hard work. I'm sure you are very busy these last couple weeks trying to get everything done. Are we still on schedule?
I was a little bit nervous yesterday, and I went over, and Tim Carson said, "It's not August 1st yet." And he said, "We'll get there, and it'll look great." So, and I believe him.
All right.
I appreciate our building and ground stepping up and doing their regular work, plus all the additional they've had.
Yeah, our building and ground staff, along with our custodial staff, you know, and just a lot of people have, in our technology department, the additional work beyond, above and beyond what a normal scope would be is tremendous. And they've all just stepped up, and the complaints are at least not making it back to me.
Are there any more questions?
I don't want to jinx anything by asking the question, so I'm hesitant to ask it. But have we scheduled the ribbon cutting yet?
Yeah, I've got that announcement later in the meeting.
Fair enough.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I moved to approve Phillips' paving change orders one through six, Willcott Construction Change Order One, J. A. Lilig Construction Change Orders seven through nine, Crossland Construction Change Orders 38 through 43. construction change orders 38 through 43, and Progressive change order three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now on school resource officer agreements.
These next four action items won't take nearly as long, I hope. As you know, we have three outstanding school resource officers in the district, and we have a great working relationship with the police departments in both Peculiar and Raymore. I believe, and I think most would agree, that SRO program is a positive collaborative effort and, and it's great for our district. The proposed SRO agreements for the 1718 school year are consistent with previous terms, with a 5% increase in the daily rate to accommodate the increasing cost. And I would be happy to answer any specific questions.
So we'll have two at the one high school building this year?
No, we'll have one at each middle school and one at the high school.
Okay.
So we'll still have two on this campus, which we did before. They were, both of our officers are in two different, and they obviously work collaboratively very closely together.
There's also a memorandum of understanding that was added to the packet that dealt with overtime. So when they work for us doing ballgame supervision, we pay overtime provisions through the city of Peculiar. So that's an addendum or MOU separate from the contract.
So with these two contracts, do we, does the school district cover the majority of the cost for the SRO?
I'll, I'll kind of address that, because there's been some commentary even reported in the local media about what that cost might be. We've had quite a bit of dialogue with city staff to talk about what that looks like. And my belief is with these figures, if you consider the number of days they work for us, which is 212 by contract versus the number of days they are still working for the city of Peculiar, we're covering our share.
Is there a set curriculum or programming that is set so that, you know, it talks about the, the education related issues to the school community, including parents, all of those different social issues?
We have an SRO handbook that we work very closely with our local law enforcement agencies and our SROs to coordinate. And they do a lot of training as requested, and then they.
I was going to say, is there a follow-up to know that they're doing these things?
Yes.
What parent ones do they do?
Specifically on parents, I, I'm not sure. I don't have a good answer for you there. I mean, I know there, yeah, I don't have a.
And if we have a, a legal issue with someone at the middle school, do we have to wait for the county, since it's not in city?
There's a, there's an understanding that they have the jurisdiction.
Mutual aid agreement, they can all work in other places.
Okay, so if we've got a drug arrest or whatever, Raymore can do it. We don't have to wait for the county.
They can address it at the time. They may then have to wait for county to arrive later to do some of the processing or juvenile or however it went.
The original triaging and assessing, they can help.
The immediate action they can take, though.
So it doesn't hold up the process at the school because we have to wait for the county?
Correct.
I don't think so.
Because they could be there a while.
Yes.
I, I think this is a valuable program, and, and I think with, with police presence in the form that they're in, I think it's, it's a positive interaction between the students and law enforcement. So I, I think it's something that we definitely need to keep up and, and as the year progresses, you know, I know that Peculiar is short-staffed, you know, at some point, we might have to think of two in the high school with so many people, but kind of see how this first year goes.
How do we address car issues in the parking lot? Can our SRO do anything about that?
Well, I guess I would need a little bit more detail on a, I mean, if it's a criminal issue, then yes. And we have a campus supervisor that patrols in, both indoor and outdoor to assist with our SROs, that has direct communication with our SROs. You know, if it was a weapon or drugs, that would, they would be involved. We would, our administration would assess it and then determine if they wanted to include the officers in that.
Is our supervisor trained well enough that if he can't get a hold of, or she can't get a hold of the SRO, that they can deal with it till they get the SRO?
Right. And they've got radio traffic to every administrator.
Okay.
Immediately. I mean, we listen to it in my office as well, and we know what's going on.
Okay.
Do they do any random drug dog, you know, up and down the lockers or in and out the cars or anything, or is that kind of?
There have been times we've done that. It's, it's, it's not a regularly scheduled activity, but it has happened before.
Yeah. I mean, I just didn't think, know if it randomly, or if that was kind of outside our jurisdiction to do something like that.
I think it's happened collaboratively at times, but I, I don't know exactly how it's been scheduled. It's more about, a lot of times, is they, they're wanting to do some training at the same time, so it's mutually beneficial to do both at the same time, so.
And with the touch on a part of what you had asked, we changed our, some of the language in some of our board policies dealing with discipline to where the SRO officer now has to be involved at the beginning. So a lot of that, they're in the know right off the bat.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the SRO agreements with the city of Peculiar and the city of Raymore and the school security event memorandum of understanding with the city of Peculiar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now on the East Middle School irrigation system.
The irrigation, the, excuse me, the irrigation system out at East Middle School actually has been inoperable for about three years, and our grass is showing it, and especially now that we're going to increase the number of events going on out there in the stadium. It's, it's time we really fix our irrigation system. So a request for proposal, an RFP was, process was conducted by the district to procure pricing to complete the necessary repair. Rose Hill Gardens submitted a bid to complete the work in the amount of $21,975, and this bid is being submitted for your consideration.
I know in previous years, there's been a lot of issue with the level, levelness of that field out there, the football field. Have they addressed that?
That wouldn't have anything to do with the irrigation side that I'm aware of. The, the grading, that's actually the first time that's been brought to my attention, so I'd be glad to look into that.
Okay, by the way.
Was there a warranty on that irrigation? I mean, that's a brand new building. It, was there an issue?
My understanding, this is before either one of our time, that when the building was constructed, there were issues with it, and I think it, towards the end of the project, we ended up just taking a credit from that vendor because they were not going to be able to perform. And so I think our crew got it to work somewhat, and it's been kind of limping along to the point where now it's time to do it right, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the base bid for irrigation system repair at East Middle School from Rose Hill Gardens in the amount of $21,975.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on KCPNL easement.
Very good. You may have noticed behind Shoal Early Learning Center, there is no longer power lines in the air, which is, which is a great thing. This joint project between the district and KCPNL provided improved safety and service reliability. I don't know if you realize this or not, KCPNL actually provided most of the materials and labor as a courtesy to ensure safety for our students. So that was, which was actually a pretty significant savings to the district. And at this point, as a standard practice, they've requested an easement for their portion of the recently installed underground electric service lines. Happy to take any questions.
Is there a way we could recognize KCPNL's generosity there?
We'll see what we can do.
At minimum, a thank you card, for sure. And this might be a way we could help them. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the KCPNL easement behind Shoal Early Learning Center.
Second.
Comment of, yes, I agree, as a, as a board, we'd like to make sure KCPNL gets credit and appreciation for what they did. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now on East Middle land lease.
I do appreciate all these being in order. We've had a great partnership for years with Briggs Turf Farm. The land lease at East Middle School for the, they leased our East Middle School undeveloped portion of the property, and the district's recommending an extension consistent with the terms of the existing agreement.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the land lease at East Middle School with LC Briggs Turf Farm.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill. And we are on the revised 2018 budget.
Good evening. I'm very happy tonight to present the completed budget book for fiscal year 2017-18. It's, there are actually two documents in your agenda item here. One is the budget book and one is, I'll come to in a moment. But this book has been prepared in accordance with the ASBO MBIA criteria, the Meritorious Budget Award criteria. And after your approval this evening, we'll be submitting it for that award. This is the same budget as you approved at your June 22nd board meeting, with just a lot of extra presentation and showing the breakdown of the budget in various ways. And it provides all of the information that you were provided with at your work sessions and your previous meetings over the months as you approved the various budget items, all put together into one single document to have in one place. If there are any questions on the budget book, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'd like to draw your attention to that second document, which is called a budget preview.
Love this page.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree.
So it just shows on one page some of the key facts about the budget. Starting with our total budgeted funds are just over 77 million. Below that, you can see all of our sources of revenue, and you can see that the local revenue, which is primarily property tax and the Proposition C sales tax, is by far our largest source of revenue. That's followed by state aid. And federal revenue makes up actually just a very small portion, portion of our total budgeted revenue, which is just under 70 million. Down the left side, it gives a breakdown of the major types of expenditures. Of course, salary and benefits is our largest expenditure, which again is about 75% of our operating expenditures. Construction there of 8 million includes both the dispersment of the remaining 2016 bond funds, plus the 2.6 million that you approved in capital outlay for completion of other projects related to the long-range facility plan. And all of these areas total to our $77 million budgeted expenditures. Although our levy rate is not set each year until August, we have to make some sort of assumption about that in the budget, and so we assumed that the levy would be kept at the same level as last year, and actually, the last 14 years, at just over $5 per $100 of assessed value. So I've provided a calculation there that shows what that tax calculates to for every $100,000 in the value of a home in the district. It's $957,000, $957.54. Below that, we take a look at the staff count, which is a good number to know. And then to fill up the lower right-hand corner, some financial factoids that just give some interesting things about our district. Our AA plus, standard and poor's bond rating, the fact that we have received an unmodified audit opinion for actually every year in memory, and that we had received the Meritorious Budget Award for the last two years. Any questions?
I think this is a great piece. It's very informative, and it's presented in a way that is easily understood. And as a result of that, I'd like to make a request, and I hope the rest of the board would support it. As we get ready to go through enrollment, I would like to have this piece presented to every family member, or every, every family, not family member, but every family that goes through the enrollment process. That way, number one, we'd be able to track it on the back end, because, you know, one of the things that, in, in our survey, you know, there's always the question of, you know, how well we do in presenting the finance piece. Well, I'd like to present this, and then that way, everybody, as they enroll their student, will know exactly, you know, how things impact them and, and what portion of, of, you know, the funds, you know, how it applies to them individually. I think it'd be a very useful for everybody to have that, in full color.
Yeah. Well, and I think we're planning to distribute a detour map for the school road construction at the same time. We attach those together, I think there's, or put them front to back.
Front and back.
It might, might help with distribution. People will hang on to that, so.
I think that's a, yeah, I think that's a great idea. I would like to get this information into the hands of our shareholders, our constituents, our families, because I think we are kind of at a crossroads financially that we need to have some pretty significant conversations around, considering.
Is there any way also to do the comparison that shows, you know, like your nurses pay compared to some other districts, or teachers pay compared to some other, I mean, do you think that's?
It's information that we need to have available and distribute over the course of our strategic planning effort. It's probably more than we can capture on a, on a one pager like this, but it, it is that type of information that we will have out this fall.
I think we can spoon feed them, that might not be a good term, but give them.
Dose at a time.
A dose at a time, right. So here's, here's some good budget information, then we can move on to the next step.
Any other questions or comments?
Other than thank you, it was a lot of work this year with all the building reconfiguration, and that created, what, 10,000 new line items or something?
At least.
Or it felt like that, right?
Cindy, I want to thank you for putting all the effort into everything you've done over the, over the year, as well as putting this information together in a way that makes sense to average people like myself when it comes to budgets. So thank you very much and for your continued professionalism. So thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the revised, or, the revised fiscal year 18 budget as presented, and I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Pam.
Maria?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Ruth?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
Kim York?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kim Bailey?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Cindy. Tax rate hearing.
So each year prior to setting our tax rate in August, we are required to have a public hearing with information about that proposed tax rate prior to approving it. And so this action sets that meeting 15 minutes prior to our regularly scheduled August board meeting.
Is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to set the tax rate hearing for the August 24th, 2017 at 6:45 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
MSBA on the regional stuff. We had a regional meeting. Jerry Lee from Springfield is now on board with MSBA as a paid staff member. And the Outstanding Board of Education Award that we've been doing, they're going to change the dynamics up just a little bit, so it's going to align with the advocacy document that they're in the middle of redoing. So when we go to apply next year, there might be just a little bit different twist to it. And then this past weekend, I had my first state board meeting, and that went really well. One little tidbit that we learned, I know there was a lot of chatter about Tantera, and then Margaritaville has bought them. Tantera will not change names because the management company that's been managing them is the same one. So it will still remain under the name of Tantera, and at some point in 2019, it'll be Tantera, a Margaritaville property, but it will still be Tantera.
That would be great. The board going to Margaritaville.
That would be a lot of.
Sounds really bad.
And there was also some discussion of, of the Missouri Association of Counties, because we have our retreat there as well. So it, it wasn't just the MSBA and, and all the boards that were associated. It actually truly, yes, yes.
So, yes, if they changed their name, they might lose a lot of business, for sure. Thank you very much, Ruth. Any other committee reports? I know Strategic Plan Committee, we're going to have our first meeting hopefully mid, early August, to kind of get some things to present to the board. And most of the other committees didn't meet over the summer, so as those start coming up, we'll have more reports.
It's not AM, well, I'll wait till other, I guess, it's not a committee, so I'll wait till the other announcement.
All right, I appreciate that.
Never mind.
Superintendent's report.
Just a couple items I'd share with you. We've saw, saw the construction report and everything across, not just the projects Insights working on, but we've got a lot of other projects that Scott Dobson's taken the lead on, and it's, it's going to be a scramble these last three weeks, there's no doubt, but we're going to be ready for school. We do have, to Ryan's question earlier, of a plan now for doing a dedication ceremony at Shoal and the high school on the 17th of August, which is the Thursday the week prior to school start. to school start. And we just had to kind of line up all the activities that were going on and figure out a date that would work the best. So, the plan is, on the 17th, at 5:30, we would do something at Shoal, some type of dedication ceremony with mostly christening the playground. We had a lot of donor support, both from the foundation, your Peculiar Charitable Trust. A lot of work went into that, and donors from across the district through the foundation efforts there. So, we'll do something there at 5:30, and then we'll transition over to the high school campus. We'll meet in the Library Media Center at 6:15, have a brief ceremony. And then, the plan is to have an open house that evening from 6:30 to 8:00. So, it's not that the general public will necessarily want to come to the 6:15 ceremony, but we want as many that want to to come and take a tour, a walk-through. And we'll have a lot of our staff available to answer questions and help people find their way through what is a very impressive and large building now at this point. I think our community's really going to receive that well and enjoy that.
What was the date on that again?
17th.
17th.
Mm-hmm. And we have that in our Friday morning newsletter going out tomorrow as well, so...
And what time will the open house start?
6:30. As soon as we're done with the ceremony part, which, again, it's, it'll be a brief, brief set of comments, and then we'll move on into the open building, open house. School Road, the pre-construction meeting was last Thursday, and so the contractors on board, you know, anytime they start a project like that, they've got to get storm structures approved, and shop drawings, and contracts, and things alike of that going. But they are to the point now where they're going to start construction in the next week or so. The good news from that pre-construction meeting is that they are going to do this last phase actually in two phases. So, the south segment from 211th Street to the fire station will be closed first. We still have our entrances from 211th to get in from the south into the campus. And we will still have access from the north end to the south middle school campus. That will take place in the fall. And then, based on when it gets completed, if it's near what appears to be winter weather, they will go ahead and wait till spring to, to do the second phase. So, in the meantime, we would have full access to the old and the new segments until they're ready to start back in the spring. That's the most likely scenario. I guess there could be a scenario where the weather's perfect and everything goes great, and they get it all done both phases in the fall. But we'll just kind of have to see how the weather impacts it, obviously. With that, we are preparing with the help of our SROs, some maps to guide our families, and with the hope of next Wednesday at registration, we'll have some detour maps that will show them how we want them to come to our campus. We've got a couple entrances designated for our students, and some separate ones for buses and, and parents, to try to keep some segregation there to the amount we can. So, we'll make the best of it. Obviously, it's not an ideal situation, but it's an important improvement. And just think how nice it's going to be when it's all said and done. So, we're excited about that work happening. As I mentioned, registration the first day is next Wednesday. We already have, I believe Pam said, 43% of our families with fast passes that completed all the documentation for the online part, and the residency submitted that and gotten approved. So, that's a great service to our families to be able to do that. And Pam and our technology folks have taken the lead on making all that happen. And I will dispel one rumor that we've heard the last couple of days, that school is going to be starting late because of all this construction. I just want to assure all of our students that they will not be late starting school. We will be ready to go on August 23rd. Not sure where that started, but like any urban rumor, it's probably more of a wish than a fact, and I can tell you, it's not a fact. So, we're ready, we'll be ready to start August 23rd.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Montes?
You know, I wonder if the rumor, because didn't we push the start of school back? I wonder if that's, people are, they're misunderstanding what we've done versus what we, we could be doing.
Yeah, I think probably what kicked it off is there are other districts in the area that are starting kind of when we would normally start the week prior. And so, maybe that is triggering some of this. But I think most of that is just fake news, so.
So, we are starting August, we are starting August 23rd as planned.
As planned.
As planned. All right. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Montes? Thank you again for all of the work that you do. Are there any Board of Education comments?
Yes, I have Board of Education comments. The, the foundation hosts the gala each year, and we've started planning for that. We're very excited, because Raymore has the new Centerview facility, which we're going to be using for the gala this year. So, we're very excited to get that in district, and be in that brand-new, beautiful space. And it is on February 24th this year, and just wanted to get people thinking about that, so.
Any other board comments?
For once, I won't be in DC at the same time, so I'll be able to attend. So, wonderful. Can we do something maybe a little bit different or special for convocation? You know, as I'm looking at the, the new signage that's over the doors that we're going to usually go in, can we roll the red carpet out for our staff, maybe have some paparazzi, maybe some swag from the board to give to our teachers as they, as they come in for a new year?
Let us put some thought to that. We're kind of getting down to the time where we're a little busy right now for much planning. But if we can think of something straightforward, then we'll, we'll see what we can come up with. I'd be, any, any suggestions, we'll, we'll take, take into consideration, see if we can make them happen, so. Appreciate the thought, though, there's no doubt.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the schools for letting our law enforcement, sadly enough, that they have to plan for active shooter training. My oldest son took part in that, and he said it was very interesting. But also, kind of put in his forethought that he has two siblings. Well, one's not in school yet, but one that is in school, that this could really potentially be a risk. But I'm glad our law enforcement is taking and being proactive, and that we let them use our schools to do that.
Absolutely. They are big players in our back-to-school training we do each year. And they're, they're to the point now where, you know, we're relying on them more and more for that kind of training. It's a good partnership.
Any other comments? I'd like to speak on behalf of the board, and you correct me if I'm wrong. But I just want to get on record that we are unanimously and strongly committed to do everything within our power to bring salaries to a competitive level. Would that be a fair statement? Okay. So, I just want to get that out there on the record, that we're going to do everything within our power to, to make that happen. All right? If there's no other comments, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, did you have another comment? Oh, was I getting out here too soon? Dang it. All right, calendar of events. We have August 2nd and 8th is registration. August 23rd, we have is the first day of school. August 24th, the, we have another board meeting. And August 17th, we want to highlight the ribbon cutting. And August 24th, also, what was, what was your thing again?
Oh, that's February.
Oh, that's February. Okay. I just remembered the 24th. Anything else we need to add to that? Okay.
When is convocation?
16th.
Okay.
16th, in the morning.
And that's, thank you to Pam, is already on our calendars?
Will, will be on our calendars?
Okay, any other, any questions or comments? All right, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Correction, it is on our calendars. I'm sorry, Pam.